Okay. All right, so let's see here. Sorry Sawyer. Okay, you should be in now. On your phone. Okay. Hold on one second, let me see about getting Julia.
Can we, can we just let everybody at home know that we've been having some technical difficulties? And we apologize for the delay, but we'll be with you shortly.
Who are we missing here? Julia's in. So we just, Catherine needs to get set up and Sawyer, right?
Yeah.
Can people hear me now? Yes, good.
I think we're ready to begin. Okay, thank you so much for your patience, everybody. Welcome, it is Thursday, October 22nd. We're sorry, we're getting off to a later start than we had anticipated. We were having some difficulty with our setup this evening. But thank you so very much to Kim for helping us troubleshoot. It's really good to see everybody. Nice to be in the library, glad we could be here together. I will make a motion for the board to return to public session, please, if I could have a second. Thank you Rory, if we could please vote all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, six aye, terrific. And if everybody would please join us, as is our custom, to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, thank you. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you so much. It's good to be back and tonight we are really looking forward to an update on professional learning across the district and also just to an update on our schools and the evolution of our hybrid model. We're looking forward to hearing from members of the community, many of whom have joined us tonight during our public forum. Thank you for being with us. I'm just gonna pause briefly to invite some board announcements. If anybody has any, please let me know. And if not, then I know we're very eager to hear from you Andrew tonight and that you have quite a few updates for us, so please, the floor is yours.
For, thank you very much Marjorie.
Thank you.
Before I get into announcements, I want to point out that this week is School Board Appreciation Week all across New York State. And in this year of all years, we'd be remiss if we didn't express our appreciation for all that our board has done in these daunting and difficult times to support our schools and our district and our students and everybody who works in the district and the community. So thank you all on behalf of all who work in the district and I'm gonna turn to Kim, who's gonna share some appreciation from some other folks too.
Thank you Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay, this is on behalf of Parent Council members. On behalf of Board of Edu- On behalf of the members of the 2021 Cottona Lewisboro School District Parent Council, we join the state of New York in saluting local Board of Education members during during New York State School Board Week, October 19th through the 23rd. This commemorative week recognizes the tremendous contributions made by school board members across New York State, including you as the Cottona Lewisboro School District Board of Education members, who are tasked with governing public education under New York law. You, as the Cottona Lewisboro School Board members, have the responsibility of leading our schools. We recognize that this school year in particular is challenging due to the unprecedented and unforeseeable nature of the COVID-19 pandemic. Your sustained leadership, honesty, integrity, confidence, along with your concerns for our children's emotional and social well-being, are the major contributing factors which makes Cottona Lewisboro a top school district. Each of you contribute your own strength to our school district and these different contributions and perspectives make you an impressive board. You are the, you are able to navigate your differences, pick up on each other's perspectives and ultimately arrive at the best possible outcome for our students and our schools. We are fortunate to have such a dedicated group leading our school district and looking out for the best interests of our children. We want to thank you for your leadership, your commitment to our students and our community and your support and mission to continually improve education for our children. We recognize the countless hours you spend serving our students, faculty, administration and staff. Most importantly, we appreciate every one of you who have stepped up to guide education in our community. Thank you, 2021 Cottona Lewisboro Parent Council members. Now we have a few little gifts, tokens of appreciation from our elementary students.
Thank you, Kim, thank you for sharing that with us and thank you to our students and staff for those beautiful images and for bringing just a heartfelt smile to each of our faces tonight. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that and how badly we need it. And thank you so much to our parent council, I think I can safely say we did not expect those kind words tonight and we are humbled by them and thank you so very much for for taking the time to write such a thoughtful thank you, it means a great deal and we would be remiss if we didn't say the feelings are mutual and that we thank you so very much for your unfailing leadership of our schools, especially in this time. You are really going out of your way to bring community together to continue to engage families and parents, not just students. And we really need that and we really sincerely appreciate it, so thank you so much, that was really
Thank you.
Really nice, thank you.
Our pleasure, thank you all. So I'm gonna continue now, I have a little bit longer than usual update tonight, so thanks in advance for putting up with me. I do want to start, as I have in previous meetings, by thanking our entire community for working so well and so collaboratively with us to keep everyone as safe as possible. As you know, since our last meeting, we've shared information a few times with our community about positive cases of COVID-19. In each case so far, because the individuals involved were so thoughtfully proactive and followed all the rules in place, we have not needed to close our schools. As you may know, we are required to report cases to New York State when they involve our students or our staff. We're not required to inform the state about cases among parents. I do however become aware when we have positive cases among parents and I can say again that in each case that I've been made aware of how families are doing exactly what they should be doing, following the directions on the daily health screeners and keeping students at home. And again, as a result, we've been able to keep our schools open and keep everybody as safe as possible. So I can't stress enough how much we appreciate that and how important it is that we continue in just the same way. This week, we know that Governor Cuomo added New York, New Jersey and Connecticut to the states to which non-essential travel is discouraged. He stopped short of requiring the quarantine that's required upon return from so many other states and countries. Of course, it would be impossible to us for us to function if such a quarantine were in place as so many of our staff live in Connecticut. And it's a reminder that if we do get to that point, that's the kind of thing that would push us back to a fully remote model, which I think serves as another reminder of how careful we all have to be about travel, which gets us thinking probably about the upcoming Thanksgiving holiday. And I wanted to mention tonight because I think some may already be aware that there have been some very preliminary conversations in other local districts about the possibility of staying closed or going fully remote following the Thanksgiving break, out of concern for virus spread if families do travel and because many college students would be returning home over that break. I'm not aware of any districts that have yet made a firm decision in this area and I'm sorry, I'm not here tonight to make a recommendation to our board. I just wanted everyone to be aware that this conversation is happening. I think there are some even some mixed views on whether, what the right timing would be for a close. And of course, it's honestly, it's our desire to keep our schools open and keep as many students in them as possible for as long as possible. But I think it's something that we should keep watching for and listening carefully to what's going on around us. Thanksgiving's still a month away and even though the numbers have risen in Westchester in our immediate school community, they have stayed relatively low, again, thanks to everybody's efforts. It's also possible that we might receive guidance from New York State on this topic. And if we do, we'll certainly share that as soon as we have it with the entire community. So, so nothing more on that tonight, I don't want people thinking that we're debating that. I just wanted people to be aware that that is beginning to be a discussion and you may hear about it in some neighboring districts. And now I want to go on and share what I think is some good news about the evolution of our programs for students. As you know, when New York State provided guidance to districts about reopening plans for this year, they allowed us to prioritize and I'm quoting here from the state, they allowed us to prioritize in-person instruction for students who need it the most. And this is very unusual in a public school district as our typical model is to welcome everybody and not to make distinctions among groups of students. But clearly the state understood that schools would not be able to accommodate all of our students in light of the pandemic and that prioritizing would be necessary. They told us that we should put particular emphasis on in-person instruction for younger students, for low-income students, for special education students, for English language learners and for those with limited access to technology. The state also told us that we needed to communicate and to get feedback from our stakeholders in our local communities, which we certainly did over the summer. We met with parents and, and what we heard, not surprisingly at all, is that a balance would be important in our community. In other words, though our parents understood that some groups would need to be prioritized, they didn't think it would be wise to include some groups entirely if it also meant the entire exclusion of other groups. To put that more simply, at the time when we were talking about these things back in August, we knew that some districts were talking about bringing back all their elementary school students, for example, but using space in middle schools and high schools to do that. And as a result, all the students may have to have stayed entirely remote. And in general districts that floated those kinds of ideas ended up not staying with them, in fact, when schools opened. As you know, following all the feedback, we decided to go with a hybrid model that allowed us all of our students K-12 to come back at least two days of each week. And we used remaining space and staff to include kindergarten, first graders and some of our neediest special education students for four days a week of instruction. And so we did prioritize as New York State suggested. We also asked our families to commit to the hybrid or the fully remote model for September and October. And we said that we would keep looking for opportunities to include more students as the year progressed. Yesterday, our Special Education Director reached out to the families of 65 additional students who received special education services to ask if they would like their children to start attending four days per week instead of two. And I expect that some of those students, if not many of them, will begin attending for four days as soon possibly as this coming Monday. So we're really pleased to be able to extend those services. At the same time, we reached out to some of our neediest English language learner families, again to ask if those students would like to attend four days per week instead of two. And again, I expect some of those students to join us for four days a week very soon. Today, just today, earlier today, our principals have reached out to all of the more than 90 families that have requested changes from the hybrid to the remote or from remote to hybrid. And again, we're happy to let all those families know that we are able to accommodate the changes that, that they had requested. We're making those changes in our elementary schools effective this coming Monday, which is a week earlier than we had originally planned, but since we were able to do it, we wanted to move it forward at the elementary level because we don't want the transition for our younger students to be too abrupt. We are gonna wait until the following Monday, November 2nd, which is the time we originally said in order to make the, in order for those changes to take effect and to allow for some transitional work to occur. Given that we had asked all of our families in August to make a commitment for September and October, we felt we had to honor that commitment and be sure we could accommodate those requested changes for November, December and January before we went further with other considerations. But we have also been thinking about other ways to bring more students in more frequently from those same prioritized groups. So that brings me to our second graders. We, we know well how important it is for them to be in school too. I'm gonna say more in just a moment about where we are in our efforts. We've heard from a number of our second grade families recently, we appreciate your advocacy, though I can assure you, you don't need to convince us of the importance of your children being in school anymore than our special education families or our English language learner families need to convince us. We wish we had the space and the staffing to bring all of our students in. And I want, I do want to caution us against comparing to other districts, although I can tell you that every superintendent in Westchester and Putnam at this moment has grown very accustomed to being compared to every other district in the region. It's something that we discuss regularly. In districts that went, for example, with half-days for elementary school students, parents in those districts want to know why can't the days be full days as they are in other districts. In districts that used librarians or art teachers or interventionists to supervise cohorts of students, parents want to know why can't our students have library or art or the same level of academic support they've had in other years, just as they do in other districts. We're all, we're all hearing these comparisons and we do understand it. The inquiries from parents are understandable, these continue to be very trying times for everybody. And we all want what's best for our children and we would all like to be, we would all like things to be as they were before the pandemic. But the obvious point here, I hope, is that there are trade-offs. An opening school in September was a question of thinking as carefully as we could through all the different trade-offs that we were willing to make at that time to bring as many students as possible back to school. In our elementary schools, we have been using our libraries as classroom spaces since September. But we chose to keep our librarians functioning as librarians so that students in all grades could still have that library experience, even though it now happens from a cart and in the classroom. We kept art in a different form than it usually is, but we kept it and we kept the music, although finding space to play musical instruments will prove to be very, very challenging. When we knew that we needed to provide a remote option for students who would be staying home full-time, we made the very difficult decision to use some, but not all of our interventionists who are certified classroom teachers to teach some of those remote classes. That will have some impact on the level of academic support that we can provide all students, though we're still committed to providing the necessary support. And there were many more of such decisions that we were making back in August and early September as we thought about how best to, to open. One area where we stopped in August was at turning our cafeterias and our gyms into classrooms. There were certain things we weren't sure about, such as how arrival and dismissal would work and whether we would need larger spaces when the weather turned bad or whether we'd need those spaces for movement breaks or as spaces simply for students to go when they needed a change from the classrooms in which they're now spending their entire days. We just weren't sure how it was all going to work, so we held on to those spaces to have at least some flexibility. So now finally, I'm gonna come back to our second graders. And I can tell our families that for the last couple of weeks, we have been looking again at our cafeterias and our gyms. And we think we are going to be able to bring our second graders back for four days each week. But we do still have some more work to do. Our technology department is currently assessing these spaces that have never been used before as instructional spaces to see what we need to do to upgrade them. We have to be sure that all the technology we need in this new environment will work both for students when they're in those spaces and for students who may be home but need access to the lessons happening in those spaces. We also have to determine what other physical changes are necessary to convert those spaces. And we have to look at how and when we can best relocate existing classrooms and we have to resolve some scheduling and supervision issues. I know that our families wish these things could have happened sooner and quite honestly, so do we. But of course, there were other decisions and needs and priorities on which we've had to be focused to best serve all of our students. And when our cafeterias and gyms become used as classroom spaces, there will inevitably be other trade-offs, particularly as we move into the winter months. And again, none of these are easy decisions to make, but we know that they're important decisions to make. If the work that we're currently doing proceeds as expected, then I hope to be able to share more concrete information with our second grade families no later than early in November. And finally, I do want to say something to our many other families, the vast majority in fact, who I haven't referenced so far. Please know that I and all of my colleagues appreciate how very challenging these times continue to be for everyone. We know that school, while we hope and think it's going well for many, is certainly not what it typically is. Those sports and arts and clubs are getting started and they let us feel that some things are moving forward positively. We have to be realistic and recognize that many things are necessarily staying as they are. I'm not a health expert by any stretch, but it does feel like the virus is creeping closer despite all of our best efforts. And it's hard not to wonder what the coming weeks and months hold for all of us. I can assure you that we will keep thinking about what makes the most sense for our students. We will keep making adjustments as we can and we'll keep working together with our students, our staff and our community to do the very best we possibly can for all. So thank you for bearing with me through this longer than usual update. Thank you again to our board and that's all I have for tonight's update.
Thank you so much for the update Andrew, please don't apologize for the extensiveness, we really appreciate this great news, thank you for the update and thank you also for reminding us of how we arrived, where we arrived at the opening of school. I definitely would like to pause in case board members have any questions or concerns that they want to ask or raise at this time. But please allow us to just take a moment to thank you and your entire administrative team for putting KLSD in a position to have shared the good news that was already shared with students earlier this week and for being able to accommodate those 90 families, for bringing students back to school for additional in-person days. That's really terrific to hear and and we do understand and appreciate how, how much coordination and careful planning and thoughtfulness has gone into all of the above. So thank you so very much. Again, let me pause for a minute to see if there are any questions, comments, Phil, please.
Just a comment that, I mean, great news, great work and I can sincerely imagine the trade-offs that this all requires. When you, when more details are available about the plan for second graders, do you plan to outline at least in broad strokes where some of the compromises are? So that people aren't surprised that this means less gym time or you know, whatever the consequences are that they should sort of see some of the math that went into this?
Sure, yes, we would do that.
Great.
I, I just have a real quick question. Andrew, you mentioned that there's some technology challenges and I think you mentioned supervision and scheduling and a couple of other things. Are we actively now looking into those items and considering converting the cafeteria at this time? Or are we still sort of planning on paper as to what it might look like with the hopes of an update in early November? Or do we think that we may actually be able to bring students in in early November?
Rory, we've been looking at these things for a couple of weeks at least. So we've already, we've had our technology department in those spaces, trying to figure out what's necessary. And our administrators are walking the buildings, trying to figure out where the best places are. But in some cases, you know, we're thinking about reshuffling different classes around, you know, there could be better ways to reorganize the building when, when the building's opened in September. And you know that most of the grades in the building are, are in two classrooms. And a lot of work went into locating two spaces that were adjacent to each other to best provide, you know, to make it easiest for the teacher to go back and forth and have the students be as close to their peers as possible. And, and so now we, we have to look again at those configurations and it could mean some movement in the building. So that's, those are some of the things that are complicated. What, what we hope by early November is to be able to share with our families what the plan is at that point and, and what the timeline will be moving forward.
Okay, that's wonderful news overall tonight Andrew, thank you.
Sure.
Somebody else is waiting to ask a question and I think we can prepare to move on to our next agenda item. But as we do that, I'll also just mention for members of the community who might have questions, that we will have an opportunity for public forum after this presentation. And we invite you to please submit comments or questions in the Q and A at the bottom of the Zoom screen. We'll turn our attention to that in just a little while.
Marjorie, can you just remind people that in order for the comments to be read into the record, they do need to state their name and preferably like where they live?
Sure, yeah, sometimes inadvertently, we find that community members are signed in anonymously and we're not able to enter anonymous comments into the public record or read them aloud, so please be sure, as Julia suggested, to please identify yourself, introduce yourself and to let us know what side of the district you're coming from, at what level of the district your students are, which elementary school and that sort of thing, thank you so much. And welcome to our guests, thank you for letting them in. We'll pause for just a minute to make sure we're all here.
I think we are.
Okay, great, I think we're ready to turn it back to you, thank you.
Are we, are we ready for our first presentation?
Yes, I think so.
Super, all right, so I'm very happy to turn it quickly over to Mary Ford and our colleagues who she'll introduce to us, who are gonna talk to us tonight about professional learning in the district. Thank you Mary and everybody.
Thank you Andrew and thank you everyone. And again, our, our thanks to the board. In this Board Appreciation Week, we certainly appreciate your support, so thank you for all that you do for us.
Thank you.
So I will share my screen. This evening I am joined by a few of my colleagues. One is, I'm sorry, getting together there, our Director of Technology, Christopher Nelson. Also joined by our Assistant Director of Student Services, Jeffrey Cole. And our K-12 staff developers, one of our K-12 staff developers, Allison Porcelli. So tonight we'll be talking to you about the big picture of professional learning in our district. As I mentioned last week, we have been doing some surveying and we had some conversation about sharing some of those results with you, so that will be part of the presentation as well. And another piece of this is the district is asked to have a professional development plan. It was called previously, it's now called a professional learning plan and we'll speak to that in a little bit. And so we have a committee that's been working on that, so we just wanted to update you on the status of our revisions on our professional learning plan. So just some guiding questions for this evening. You know, when we think about improving student learning outcomes and experiences, we wonder how we build a system that creates this culture of continual learning. that creates this culture of continual learning and improvement for all of our educators. And then another challenge that we have is making sense of and prioritizing all of the various initiatives and demands for professional learning. As you might imagine, there is no shortage of topics to learn about and things to delve deeply into. So, you know, as we think about developing a system, we think about focus areas and how we go about doing that. So we'll be talking about how we make some of those decisions this evening. And just as a reminder, our ever-present learning commitment. So we always keep this at the forefront. So, you know, we strive to create these learning experiences that are engaging, relevant, and take place in an active learning environment. You know, when we think about the learning commitment, we often think about that for students. But as we've mentioned before, we think about that for the adults in our learning organization as well. So when we think about active learning experiences, you know, feedback, making connections, problem solving, collaborating, all of those things that we know are really important for our students. We think about those same things for the adults in the organization as well. And now Chris Nelson will talk a little bit about our technology commitment.
Thank you, Mary. So when we adopted our technology plan several years ago, we wanted to be very intentional in terms of supporting all our stakeholders in terms of use of technology. And in doing so, we drafted this commitment to technology. As you can see here, it's several paragraphs long, but I, I think that as we've taken a look at all the changes taking place in the last six months or so, from, you know, in classroom instruction to remote instruction to now a hybrid model, I think the commitment is held true to the, the third paragraph there I want to kind of highlight is that, that we want to make a conscious effort to be thoughtful in terms of how we use the technology, keep our activities balanced in such a way that we're not using technology for technology's sake. And then we continue to take a full advantage of of all resources, not simply just the digital technologies to provide inspiring learning opportunities. So, so although the, the scope and the scale of technology has certainly grown over the last nine months, our, our technology plan, when it was adopted, was a scope of over four years. We've accelerated that a lot in the past six months to accommodate the fact that we had to respond to providing both remote and hybrid learning. I just want to remind the board that we are committed to conversations and, and with that professional learning opportunities for our staff to, to have an understanding of both balance and purpose with the tools that we have available. And then both with the learning commitment and the technology committee, commitment, we wanted to develop some, some larger goals that we'll get into more details as we get through the slides this evening. We kind of broke it up into the three primary objectives as we talk, a look at, take a look at the, the professional learning plan that we are going to talk about tonight. So first is we have to create a culture and climate that is supportive of adult learners. We also wanted to make sure that we're clear and purposeful with the district values and priorities regarding student learning. And then the last piece of our presentation tonight, we'll talk a little bit about providing opportunities that are relevant and intellectually engage in gauging for both our faculty and staff. So, so we'll take parts of all this. Mary, I believe you're taking the first part in regards to some research around professional learning. So I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you. So the next section is really an overview of what the research tells us about professional learning specifically for educators. And it really breaks it down into three main conditions that we need for optimal professional learning experiences to take place. One, as Chris mentioned, is this professional environment. So we want to have an environment where professional learning and continual improvement is just part of the fabric of what we do. So we're always reading, discussing articles, looking at new research that comes out and that, you know, we're always thinking about improving our practice in, in effort to support our students. So that's an kind of an overarching piece in order for professional learning to be really effective. Another is that teacher voice is present. So when teachers are involved in some of the choices we make around professional learning, and that could be both in terms of the topic and content of the professional learning, but also around the structures that feel most supportive and most engaging, that's a really important part. And also coherence. So when we think about all of the different demands for professional learning that we have, we try to develop some focus areas to make sure that it seems coherent because there are so many things that we need and want to learn about. And yet we have to try to keep our focus as we move forward. So when we think about professional learning, we really look at the research for adult learning theory. And, you know, some of the things that you'll see on the slide here are the things that are most important for adult learners. So we know that for adults to learn and learn deeply, they must be motivated to learn. So, you know, for educators, it really goes back to the classroom. What can help me in the classroom? Sometimes we think about what can help me in the classroom tomorrow, but also longer term, what can really help my students to learn more deeply, to be more engaged. Those are things that teachers think about all the time, but so having that motivation to learn is a big part of it. Also, for adults, it's especially important to build upon their experiences. So one of the researchers said something like experiences, the adult learner's textbook, right? So we build upon our own experiences. And then as we experience new things, we try to make some connections and make sense of those things. Self-directed learning is another big part of adult learning theory. So adults like to make, take their own path, make their own path. So of course, when we think about professional learning for educators, that has to be connected to what we do in schools. But it may be something that's very much connected to your current job or something that you aspire to do, or it might be a challenge that you're facing in your teaching. But you're making some choices around what you're learning and how you're learning it. And then also context is very important. So again, that professional learning environment, it's also the context of perhaps the district, the school you're working in, the grade level or department, those things all make a difference. And so it's very specific to that context. And then differentiated experiences. So we all are at different places in our learning journey. And if, you know, for something, some topics, we may be novices, I think we're all feeling like novices with this concurrent learning that we're experiencing right now. So we might need more scaffolding and support. In other topics, we might have lots and lots of experience. And we don't need as much scaffolding, but we might need a different type of learning experience, maybe more reflection and critical conversation. So that's important as well. And then this idea of transformational adult learning. So that's defined in the research as moving past tendencies to reject ideas that don't fit your current frame of reference and being able to think about things in different ways. So in order for that to occur, there have to be all of these conditions and, you know, some of these other pieces of adult learning that have to be there in order for transformational adult learning to occur. And then there's also lots of research on the qualities of effective learning experiences for teachers. So those kind of one-time workshops typically aren't as effective. So the sustained focus and duration, when you're learning something over time, going more deeply into the same topic, that is most effective. Also collaboration, adults especially, but I think children and adults alike like to learn together and work together on projects and solving problems. So that's a really important part. Having a content focus, so specific pedagogy to a discipline or content area is seen to be most effective. And then again, aligned with our learning commitment, those active learning structures. So things like feedback, coaching, modeling, problem solving, where learners aren't passive, where they're actually very active in the learning experience. And then expert facilitation is also really important. So when you have some kind of prepackaged professional development, that doesn't seem to take hold as much as when you have a facilitator who adjusts to the needs of the learners. And it's also best when there's trust and credibility in terms of the facilitation. So if you're learning from someone who you know is knowledgeable and has been studying something for a long time and may have some content expertise, that's really helpful. And also that kind of trusting relationship where you can be vulnerable, you can take a risk and you can be guided by another adult. And then when we think about the impact of professional learning, we think about two main things. One is the impact on student performance. And that can be measured in many different ways. And we also think about the impact on teacher practice. So are teachers making some changes in their classroom? Are they trying new strategies? Are they doing things a little bit differently? And are they reaching out and talking with colleagues about those things? So these are two of the things that we look at, the ways that we determine the impact of professional learning. So in line with thinking about that professional environment, I will turn it over to Allison Porcelli.
Hi, everybody. So the I'm going to talk about some of the structures that we have and we try and have a wide range of structures to touch upon these different research areas that, that Mary talked about. So the first one that's listed, and I won't talk through every single one, but the first one that's listed, the superintendent conference days, two of those typically, as this says, pre-COVID, typically are November and our February are filled with, I mean, at least 50 or more, right, Mary? How many? Is it 100? There's a lot. A lot of workshops that teachers can choose from. And usually, you know, they're short, you know, maybe 45-minute workshops and they can choose across the day. They can choose three different workshops. These tend to be more of the kind that Mary said. A lot of times they're like sort of the one, the one-off workshops. But the idea is that it provides teachers with, you know, a quick dose of inspiration. They get to make these choices and often, as Mary will talk about in a little bit later, they're tied to focus areas for the district. And so usually they're part of larger topics that we do revisit across the year. And we also, what's important about days like that is then we have the work of the ongoing internal staff developers where we'll then can follow up with teachers. If teachers want to dive more deeply into any of those topics that they studied, they can meet with us or we can work with them in their classroom and support them as they, as they try it out. We can model it. So that duration is really important to continue those kind of workshops. And also some other structures that we offer that are similar but a little different and that help with the duration and building up content knowledge is another thing that lots of teachers really want from professional learning is our after-school workshops and our professional book clubs, outside work with consultants, and even going to external courses, all of these different structures really help to build up teachers' content knowledge. Our after-school workshops often look like, we'll usually offer you know, different ones across the year. Teachers will come together, a group of teachers will sign up. And so, you know, again, there's that choice. It's, you know, voluntary. They'll sign up for it because they're interested in the topic. And they'll spend maybe, you know, four, five weeks coming together around this topic and studying it and trying it out in a, in a really collaborative environment. For example, last year, one of the ones we did was on integrating technology into your literacy teaching and teachers came and they learned about different tools that could support and enhance their literacy teaching. And then they tried them out and planned for their own instruction. We've had a lot of professional book clubs going on for the past, you know, at least a year, Candy has been doing professional book clubs around race and equity. For example, right now she and Catherine are doing one on, so you want to talk about race? And it's a group of teachers that come together and I think these tend to be monthly as well. Come together every week and have different readings, come and talk about them, usually pair them with different articles. It's a really nice structure to help people process these different professional texts. And then a couple other ones to highlight. So our work with our outside consultants often provides, all of these, I think, a lot of them provide this active learning environment. But one thing that is unique to some of the outside consultant work pre-COVID is that we got to also work with outside consultants in the classroom. So it wasn't just us going to workshops like we do if we go to our, when we go to our BOSI's courses or Teachers College classes, those are really helpful. But again, you're being a little bit more of a passive learner, taking in the content knowledge. When the consultants come in, what's really nice is the teachers, you know, typically on a grade level from, for example, with Teachers College, will get together and they'll go into a classroom and the consultant will model something and the teachers will try out that technique right then and there with, with the students. So that's usually a really powerful model as well. Are there any other ones you want me to highlight, Mary?
It's just the, I think the innovation cohort is something that our board is really familiar with. You know, and so that's a cohort that meets over two years. So when you think about that sustained right? And there's sustained focuses on action research. So they are doing inquiry work all the time, but they're choosing the focus of their work. And it is always connected to the learning commitment and connected to one of our focus areas. But they're choosing how that makes sense in their own classroom. So it's particularly meaningful. And then they get together and have discussions and dialogue all the time, both online and in person. More in person, pre-COVID, obviously. But I think that's a good example of a strong professional learning community that we have within the district.
I think that's a great example too, also that we have an outside consultant who supports them with that. And then she meets with them in between to have conferences and yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Yeah.
And so Jeff's going to talk to us a little bit about all these demands that we have for professional learning.
Thanks, Mary. So given the unique demands of professional learning at this point, I thought it'd be helpful to talk about some specific offerings that the district could be able to provide to our administrators, teachers, staff members to address some of these concerns. We've been lucky to have some facilitation with Apple, Microsoft and leveraging existing technology and software to support the unique learning that's taking place now hybrid wise and through distant learning, distance learning platforms. I've also partnered up with existing, using existing staff developers to support guided reading instruction, supporting independent readers, looking at our existing practices, refining them, discussing them, and doing all this in a very collaborative manner. I, I love the fact that we're also able to offer wellness support for our staff and faculty. So in terms of relaxation, nutrition, yoga. So all this is designed to support the total, total staff member, not just simply just professionally, but looking at the whole picture for our, our staff members here. We have been discussing through book groups oppression, power and privilege. We've been partnering up with Manhattanville College and looking at sustainability for education. And we're also looking at specific ways of supporting our students who academically and socially emotionally demonstrate unique needs. So it is quite a myriad of, of needs that we're trying to support with our teachers and staff and administrators. And what's great about it is that we're offering this in a very systematic way that allows us to really go deeper and not just do surface level work. The challenge we do have is how do we stay focused on and, and keep, keeping focused on the learning commitment and focus on some key areas? So this graphic here that we have on the screen really helps guide our thinking. All our professional development opportunities are aligned to these key areas. Pedagogy, equity, response to intervention or MTSS, technology, sustainability and social emotional learning. This really guides our work to make sure that we're really focusing on those key areas, developing deep capacities of adult learning and sharing these key areas with members of the school community.
Thank you, Jeff. And I think, you know, we, just to say right now, we've been much more focused on the pedagogy, in particular, distance pedagogy, you know, we're calling it concurrent teaching right now. So concurrently teaching the students in school and at home. So there's been a very heavy focus on that. So there's been a very heavy focus on that. And we've been focused quite a bit on equity, identity, and diversity as well. Less so this year on sustainability and response to intervention, although those things remain very important to us. You know, it's just interesting to think about because of the time we're in. You know, our needs may shift here and there. But we keep coming back to these very important focus areas and always keeping the learning commitment at the center. So we talked a little bit about teacher voice and how important that is. And so we do try to gather feedback along the way. And just to share some of the feedback that we've been hearing and receiving through surveys and just anecdotally, you know, the feedback around the initial focus on tech tools when we started distance learning back during the extended closure, that was an emergency, right? We all had to learn new tools and we had to learn to do something new overnight. But after a few weeks, we were able to focus more on effective practices for distance learning and more of the pedagogy. And then as time went on during the spring, in current events led us to more conversations around race, equity, and diversity, right? And our faculty members needed a place to kind of talk through some of those things. How do you have difficult conversations? How do you foster civil discourse in your classrooms? So those are other shifts. But then, you know, we knew that this school year was coming to an end and we had adopted Schoology, our new learning management system. So right at the very end of the school year, there was much more focus on that. But then during the summer, we had lots of choices. So we had three tech summits this summer, June, July, and August. And teachers had the option of learning lots of things, Schoology included. There were lots of subtopics within Schoology. It has many, many features. But there were also other things. As Jeff mentioned, some of the Apple products and some of the Apple trainers were able to join us and Microsoft as well, some of the assistive technology tools. We also focused on reading, knowing our Readers Institute, which we've been having now for a couple of years. So we were very happy to have that once again. The Race and Equity Book Clubs and Teaching Workshop in a Hybrid Environment, just some of the topics that we focused on. And also, we had a lot of voluntary meetings. So thinking about that professional community that we are building, voluntarily, teachers met weekly for reopening committees to talk through how we could problem solve and how we could best think about reopening. You know, one group was focused on social-emotional learning, another focused on academics, another focused on safety. But many, many people gave of their time over the summer to do that. And then we have our all-in group that continues to meet. And many of our teachers who are focused on issues around equity meet to talk about what that looks like in their classrooms. And they continue to do that during the school year. And then we always have summer curriculum proposals. So when teachers can propose to do some work over the summer on their curriculum. So this year, there was much more of that. And teachers were able to use Schoology, even though it was a new tool, to create new resources and share them and think about engaging and motivating units. And we also continued the focus on race, equity, and inclusion there. And Chris will just give you a reminder of something we showed you last year.
Yeah, and so in building a program, we want to make sure we're communicating with faculty and staff in terms of what opportunities are available to them. We've historically used My Learning Plan as a tool for registration and promotion of programs as we develop them. We felt that that was effective in terms of keeping track of participation. But in terms of promoting all the different activities that were taking place, we consolidated all that information into a one-page PDF that we distributed to staff every week. So usually, you know, over the weekend, usually Monday or Sunday evening, you would send out a PDF file that looks very similar to this. And although it says instructional technology on the top, because these were sessions that were offered, there's a whole array of different topics that are listed on the bottom. So each day, you know, Monday through Friday, we offered workshops throughout the summer. You can see that there's a column for who's hosting that particular workshop and the topic of what is being offered. And then there's a Zoom link on each of these. So most of our PD activities since March have been conducted in a virtual setting. Teachers have become very proficient with Zoom. So we made it easy for them just to kind of click on a Zoom link and, you know, jump into the session when it's there. The top part lists all the different professional developers in terms of their availability to do one-on-one type activities, schedule meetings, follow-ups, those types of things. So there's hyperlinks for each of the names listed there for when they're available. And you can bring up a program called Calendly, if I pronounce that correctly, which allows, you know, faculty to quickly schedule a meeting through Outlook. And then we could work with either teams of staff or individuals. And then it says, click here. I don't know if you can see it on your screens, but there is another link to archived resources. So many of these workshops are videotaped and archived. So if someone couldn't attend it at that particular time, they could always go back and review it. There's also links to help desk pages and websites and YouTube videos that might exemplify, you know, expand upon some different topics. So this was an effective tool. I think the fact that it was a one-pager and it was a consistent model, although the topics changed throughout the weeks, teachers came to use this quite well in terms of registering for classes.
Thanks, Chris. So, you know, thinking about the impact on some of the things we've been doing so far, both pre and during COVID. So our feedback on superintendent's conference stays was overwhelmingly positive. And faculty and staff were very appreciative of all the opportunities during the closure that Chris just described. I think the connection was something that was really important to people. So it just, you know, we were very abruptly, as you know, sent home, right? And we're trying to do all of this from home and work together. And yet, we needed those opportunities to come together and usually in smaller groups as a faculty. So that was really helpful. We noticed that our tech sessions typically had the highest attendance, both before and during the closure. So that tells us something that a lot of our faculty felt the need that, you know, they really needed to learn more of the tools, which makes sense because we were introducing more and more tools as time went on. Our staff developers, through those Calendly accounts, were fully booked with individual grade level department meetings throughout the closure. And teacher practice was changed by the need to use technology, of course. But then teachers expressed much greater comfort after attending these professional learning sessions and then also having some follow-up with a staff developer. So you can imagine being in a workshop to learn about a new tool and then having an opportunity to sit with a trusted colleague and say, can you go over this with me? I'm really not sure about this part. And just try things out in a way that feels safe and comfortable. The impact on student performance is very difficult to gauge. That's, you know, a longer-term endeavor. And sometimes it's really hard to say there will be a specific change in this kind of test score, for example. But we also look at examples of student work, examples of student engagement. You know, how do we measure some of those things? So that's something we continue to look at. I know Chris has all kinds of analytics, right, on Schoology? And how often students are on, are they on on the weekends? Are they doing things? But really thinking about learning, you know, we have to target that even more specifically in individual classrooms. We saw a great increase in summer curriculum proposals. Thirteen last year in 2019, and then we were up to 63 for 2020. So it was really interesting. And I think because people knew that they had to kind of redesign everything, they were very motivated to do this summer curriculum work. So it was really helpful, I think, for getting started this school year. And just, you know, seeing our registration, whenever we open up registration in My Learning Plan for our workshops, they close out very quickly. We, you know, we laugh that it's kind of like Greek concert tickets or tickets to a play. And sometimes we had to add sessions or add space for the registration to those sessions so that instead of having 25 seats, we might have to, you know, make it 50 seats and try to get someone else to support the instructor. So those are some ways that we are looking at impact. But we know there's been a lot of questions about Wednesdays and what they look like. So Alison will talk us through the schedule for our Wednesdays.
Okay, so we usually have that choice because we know that choice is very important for teachers. So where it says professional learning sessions, one, two, and then you can see there's a third one in the afternoon, there's usually a listed underneath, similar to the one-pager that Chris showed. There's usually a variety of workshops listed on different topics with Zoom links that teachers can just go into across levels and across topics. And then there's time in the day for department meetings and grade level meetings. There's also time, you know, for any building-based meetings. Sometimes there'll be, you know, staff meetings at that time. So you can see that that's spread out from the secondary and elementary at different times. And then there's collaboration time given to teachers so that they can, it doesn't have to be collaboration just with their grade level. They can meet with staff developers at that time. Or, you know, for example, like our fully remote teachers might decide to all come together at that time. And then every day, or every Wednesday, we also have this built-in tech support time as well so that teachers know that during this time, we're all going to be available for them. Lots of times, we'll station ourselves in the library of a school and they know they can come there or they can reach us on Zoom through our Calendlies. So these are just some examples that we have done so far. So we have, of course, continued to support the tech tools. You would think we would know enough about Zoom by now, but they keep updating almost every time you turn it on. There's a new update. So we continue to support teachers with that. We have new interactive displays in all of our elementary classrooms. So that was new when teachers came back. So helping teachers navigate those. And then, of course, the different kinds of content we have been supporting teachers with Race Equity and Inclusion book clubs or different sessions around that. All around our new structures, we've done a bunch of workshops around the hybrid and fully remote instruction. We've been doing some support around our reading assessment and helping teachers with how to implement that. We've also been, there's been mental health sessions led by our different psychologists and social workers who have led those sessions to support teachers and students. So those are some of the different ones that we've been doing so far. We haven't had that many. It feels like we've been in two months, but we haven't had too many yet.
Thanks, Alison. And I had mentioned last time that we do survey the faculty. So we surveyed them after the first two weeks of school and then again after a Wednesday, after the first month of school. So one of the questions we asked here, and you can see that the top response is ranking your concerns for the next two weeks of school. So you can see that managing in-person and remote learning, that's one of the top concerns. And I think that is one of the genuine challenges. I think that's true for teachers all over the country and probably the world. This kind of concurrent teaching is very challenging. And I think we all want to make sure that we are addressing the needs of our students, both in the classroom and at home. And sometimes it feels like if you're paying lots of attention to one group, that the other group may not be getting enough attention. So I think that's an ongoing figuring out and challenge. COVID safety is, of course, a big concern. And that's something that, you know, everyone's thinking lots about. But you'll see that, like, learning new software and platforms was more of a concern earlier on. And then connecting with students was below that. But now that rose to the top the last time we gave a survey. But engaging students in learning, of course. This managing multiple devices continues to be a challenge. So those are just some of the things that our faculty are thinking about. So we did not give a survey after yesterday's professional learning, but we will give it again on the 28th so that it's really every other. So that we're starting to get some different responses to many of the same questions. And then we asked them to kind of rate things that either went well or very well and then other things that maybe were mixed or problematic, right? So connections with students who came to school was, went very well. And I think the ability to maintain COVID safety guidelines in school, teachers feel really comfortable with. So I think that's really important. And they're feeling that students are responding pretty well to the hybrid model as it appears in school and remotely and developing some new routines in the classroom. But some of the things that they feel were more problematic were connections with remote students, using some of the instructional technology. You can see software, hardware, and the student devices. So navigating all of that and managing that is more of a concern. And also developing those new routines, but it's a little harder with the remote students than it is with the students who are in person. And Chris, I didn't know if you wanted to mention anything about some of the trends you've been seeing with the technology.
Yeah, and I think our challenge, at least from our department perspective, is that our professional learning has been offered to faculty and staff, but we've also had to extend that to students and families as well. So whereas we reach out to home environments and work with the remote settings to support, there's been a large learning curve to understand what's available, understand what the expected norms are for all those variety of learning spaces that we have out there. And then, you know, connecting it back into the classroom consistently so that we can have conversations around, you know, is it the technology that's a challenge? Is it the setup that's a challenge? Is it, you know, just, you know, creating the new norms within the learning environments? Seeing that it's so new for everybody. So a lot of the problems that we have listed here, we're trying to keep an active understanding and creating feedback loops from the home environments as well to continue to evolve that. With all this being said, I also want to speak to the synergy that has been created through this process. As much as we've identified a lot of problems and concerns through the process, the learning community as a whole, as many as we get help desk questions to the tech department, we get equally as much, both from students and faculty alike in terms of recommendations. And hey, I learned this. This would be a great opportunity to share this with other colleagues or students throughout there. So the challenge to solve a lot of these problems are not centralized. I think we're developing a great learning community. And we've made a lot of gains in the short period of time that we've been introducing this model.
So faculty responses to the surveys have been overwhelmingly positive. Faculty have responded that they have enjoyed using Schoology as our online platform. It's been consistent in terms of looking at posting student work, assignments, allowing teachers and students to collaborate together and to keep information very clear, succinct, so that we're all clear as to expectations for instruction for teaching and learning. In terms of Wednesdays and how we're using that time, because we're all in a new, somewhat new environment, teachers have really valued the time to collaborate amongst themselves to discuss best practices, how they're designing their lessons, how they're leveraging technology, how they're creating their activities and assessment practices. And it's been a very much appreciated time to devote amongst themselves. I also want to echo and thank Chris. I think he's been wonderful in supporting special education in terms of also providing support for our teaching assistants and aides who are in the district. They've been receiving some of this professional development. And they've approached me many times to thank us for the increased opportunities for training, supports, which has enabled us to reach out to parents and students with increased frequency, whether it's through breakout rooms, whether it's even just even at different times, just to make sure that everyone's included, whether you're virtually or in person. So again, overwhelmingly, again, we're all working together, but the staff has very much so appreciated this time on a Wednesday to collaborate and work together in this new environment. All right. So New York State has subtly changed the professional learning expectations. And we've talked about it a lot tonight. Shifting our focus from one-and-done workshops to more systemic approach to professional learning. So we're going to talk a little bit more so about what that looks like. So we're going to talk a little bit more so about what that looks like and what the district plan is moving forward at this time. So again, we're not really calling it professional development anymore. We're talking about professional learning because it's an ongoing activity to be systematic. And everyone should be given opportunities, multiple opportunities to engage in this work. We are trying to focus much more on using data qualitative and quantitative, which is why we're using survey information. We're talking to staff members, we're taking feedback and using that to enhance our planning. As a member of the professional development committee, we actively look at the responses between sessions to see how can we improve our practices? How can we offer more varied activities and instructional material for staff and faculty? And it's been extremely helpful. It's also important to note that I think the C T L hours now allow for us to count the mentoring time to support teachers who are brand new to the profession. So again, some of this guidance is, is in line with what we're doing already. We want to capitalize that and move that forward in terms of our thinking and planning long term. So the committee has met already and we met last year and we're continuing to meet again in an ongoing fashion. We've met already and we're looking now to make our final revisions to the professional development plan for this current year. And this committee is comprised of administrators, teachers and obviously staff developers. And we actively are looking at ways to maximize and continue the work that's, that started from last spring and continuing at this point in time. It's, it's going to be dynamic in the sense that it's going to be flexible to unique needs of our, of our community. But it is definitely a, an active community, committee, excuse me, that engages in everyone's needs and tries to be reactive to supporting everyone wherever they may be.
Thanks, Jeff. And so we are, you know, in the midst of revising that plan. So the committee's meeting again on November 3rd and we'll do some more of that work. Right now, the committee members are giving feedback on a draft of the plan. And we hope to bring a final revised plan back to you in either late November, early December. So thank you, and we'd love to have some more conversation if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you so much, Mary, and thank you so much to our administrative colleagues and staff developers for joining us tonight. We really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you about professional learning more generally, but then also what has changed and what has been our focus and where have there been new needs that have been addressed through professional learning in a variety of ways? So it's very helpful to us and we really appreciate your insight. I'll pause because I imagine my colleagues have some questions and if somebody would like to begin, please just signal to me.
Marjorie, I'm happy to start.
Please, thank you, Rory.
So I, I mean, I applaud all of the great work that's going on by our administration in support of our teachers, especially this year. There's clearly an increased need for substantially additional professional development, given all the change that we're all experiencing. I, I can't emphasize that enough. I really appreciate seeing that target slide again, which, which I've always enjoyed every time I see it. That sort of highlights the social emotional learning and the technology components, as well as the sustainability, equity and diversity, pedagogy and so on, that make up our learning commitment. And the fact that it's all surrounded by our professional development, I think really does call out or emphasize just how important this is for all of us. And clearly that's, that's even more important this year. So I applaud all of the great work that's going on. Having said that, I do think that there's a question around the continued use of Wednesdays for professional development. It wasn't clear to me from the slide whether the sessions that are offered on Wednesdays are, are required sessions or optional sessions. And to the extent they may be optional, I don't know. Do we have attendance details around how many teachers are actually attending? And I'm not even sure whether, I, I do believe the teachers are in the building. I'm, I'm, I'm sort of feeling a little bit like that was absolutely crucial for the first month or two as we were all grappling with new technology and new ways of teaching. And now it's starting to feel, at least to me, like a little bit of a luxury. And I'm not suggesting that we should abolish it at all, but I just wonder, is, is the administration giving any consideration to maybe changing or altering that format? It really is at the cost of our students being in the classroom environment. And as I said, while I totally appreciate the net, the necessity for additional professional learning this year in particular, there's also a competing need, maybe even more of a need whereby our students also need to be in the classrooms more than they are. I think we would all agree on that. And so the two of them are competing with each other for, for time that's, that's, you know, well used in both cases. So I'm just wondering if they're, and I don't want to just focus on Wednesdays, but I think there is an open question there that I and the community probably share around whether or not there are opportunities to find ways to get students into our buildings and to begin to sort of teach in person again on Wednesdays.
Yeah, so thank you for that, Rory. And it's certainly, you know, a concern for all of us. I will say just one thing that I think every teacher would much prefer to be back with all students in the building five days a week. It's certainly, it's a challenge. And I think these Wednesdays have been really helpful, but we also share the concern that you've raised. We want students in the building more, we want them learning more, more live instruction. So we are thinking about how we might start to bring that in more. The other thing that's been really helpful though about Wednesdays is in addition to some of the things you've seen there. And by the way, some are mandatory and some are choice. So we'll have, you know, very specific things related to a department. Like for example, yesterday, the six, 12 math teachers got together with a consultant and they were looking at the curriculum across sixth through 12th grade and thinking about what's most essential and reviewing standards and things like that. So that was something that was not a choice. But then there were some things that, you know, some people might need a refresher with zoom and others not. So those, you know, there's a balance of those things as well. But, you know, also thinking about some of the things that we use to provide substitute coverage for, we try to do on Wednesdays. So for example, our teachers college staff developers used to come in and on all days of the week. And we would have substitutes when they were working with a group of teachers for an hour or two. We're trying to make all of that happen on Wednesdays because we don't want to pull teachers away for any other meetings during the week. It's just too critical for them to be with their students whenever they're in the building. So things like responsive intervention meetings, some of our, a lot of C S E meetings also happen on Wednesdays. So there are a variety of other things that happen within a building. We try to make those happen on Wednesdays, but know that we are looking at more student time and student engagement. We know that that's really has to be a primary concern. So it's been really helpful to us, you know, we recognize that that's important as well. I don't have an exact plan for you, Rory, but you know, just to say that we are looking at that and trying to think about with all the other changes that were mentioned this evening, how we might start to phase that in.
And I think Jeff mentioned that you're beginning to develop a plan or that the committee is beginning to develop a plan. And I just, as I, as I listened to that, I wondered, hmm, does this plan assume that Wednesdays will, that will perpetuate the current state for Wednesdays? And I'm hopeful that that's not the case.
No, no, absolutely not. And the plan is more broad, it's not, you know, for COVID times necessarily. It's, you know, bigger picture and that, you know, obviously the Wednesdays are.
And I also appreciate that it may be difficult to find substitute teachers. So I, I appreciate that we are probably making good use of that time then on Wednesdays. So I get that, thank you.
I think, can I just, I think it's also important to remember that we've been in school for seven weeks. And I believe three of those, we didn't have a fifth a day. So there was no professional development on those. And I'm not trying to minimize the need for students to be in the classroom. I just want to, you know, I know we've been in school for seven weeks, but there have not been seven of these Wednesday opportunities for professional development and learning for our, our teachers. So, and, and I guess, I think for some students, the Wednesdays, Wednesdays are a good opportunity to get a little bit caught up or, you know, sort of do some things that aren't so computer intensive, that they can work on projects and stuff like that. So I think they, they still offer some balance for our students as well, which is appreciated. And, but I absolutely agree with the goal of trying to, you know, whether we can do something where everyone is remote, but there's some small groups or things like that, I think that would be fantastic. But I just, I don't want to overstate how much time the teachers have actually had this opportunity for these Wednesdays.
Thanks, Julia. Yeah, I've heard a few teachers say, you know, in those weeks when we don't have the day, that they would trade a day off to have a day where they could meet with their colleagues and prep and collaborate and coordinate. Because it's, it just is really challenging. So, you know, and our parents, we understand that our parents are stressed. You know, sometimes our students are very stressed and our teachers are as well. But having those opportunities to come together and kind of think about what you're doing and refine and revise practices has been really helpful, but both are important. It's, they are, you know, as you said, competing interests. And we certainly want to look at our students' needs and how we can best help them.
Any other questions, comments? One question I wanted to ask with regard to whether this is in the scope of professional development is any conversation around how best to apportion or manage certain predictable activities? And whether they should occur when students are in class or at home? You know, I guess I'm thinking a little bit about assessment and emails that went out recently about Ames Web, which I imagine has to happen in district and probably can't be facilitated remotely. But again, just thinking about the trade offs and how absolutely precious the in-class time is to our students and, and appreciating that teachers feel that way too. So I'm not suggesting that they see it differently, but is this within the scope of professional development? That you're helping to develop, I'll say, global practices or best practices and recommendations about acknowledging the reality that you only have your students in the room for a certain number of hours? And here are our recommendations for how to make the best use of that time? And how best to set the students up for success while they're at home, you know, on those days that they're synchronous from home? And if you can also speak to that through the lens of Wednesday, you know, I think most community members would acknowledge that things have changed so dramatically with Schoology and with the passage of time and our ability to adapt to new technologies and tools and practices. And, and Wednesdays really are the day that could be construed as somewhat similar or reminiscent to what some students experienced last year, in the sense only that they are asynchronous. I'm not suggesting it's the same otherwise, but again, through the lens of professional learning, you know, how, how are these factoring in, if at all, to professional learning opportunities? And, and to the extent that you can share kind of global thinking on this? Or whether it's very different at different levels of the, of the district or highly variable from one teacher to the next? You know, I'd be interested to know your thinking on that.
Yeah, I think, you know, that is an evolving conversation, but certainly a topic in almost every discussion I have. I think teachers are really concerned about using the time they have with students in the best way possible and engaging those students. But there is also this feeling that, you know, you're not doing enough for the students at home. If that's the case, so it's this constant tension. And I think that's part of the stress that teachers feel. You know, it's hard to feel that you're, you know, despite your best plans and giving it your all, sometimes you just don't feel like it, it doesn't have the same feeling that it had in the past, you know? So I think that it's ongoing. We've certainly had a lot of conversations about it, you know, with regard to testing. You know, you mentioned Ames Web, for example. And so that's one of the things that's, you know, something that we have to do. It's part of our A P P R plan and we have to make sure that it happens. But again, you know, in other ways, we can think differently about prioritizing time with students when they're in the building. And in terms of asynchronous work, there have been a few professional development activities related to that that might be helpful for Wednesdays, but not just for Wednesdays. So for example, our elementary library media specialist presented on passion projects, right? So those are something that, you know, it's an independent type of work, but it's really, you know, a type of research, actually, even for our youngest students that is based on student interest. And they're looking deeply at one topic and they're doing some targeted research, you know, in a developmentally appropriate way, of course, and then presenting to others and sharing their learning. That's the kind of engaging learning experience that we want for all of our students. And as I said, not just on Wednesdays, but that we would envision Wednesdays being something like that. That could be really helpful. But I think it's an evolving conversation about what's best for the students in the room and the best use of time when you also have a group of students who are at home. So both internally and with external colleagues, we've been having conversations and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Sort of a related question in terms of the, what, what is happening for the students on Wednesdays? Is there ongoing evaluation of what the assignments are? Are there ways to make them more or less useful? The dosage, taking the temperature of how these are being received? Is it too much? Is it too little? Is it too hard? You know, so Wednesdays are what they are. Can you describe a little bit about how we're assessing what we're doing on Wednesdays and, you know, reflecting and making changes?
Yeah, well, one of the next steps is really surveying our students about the work that they do, not just on Wednesdays, but that's a part of it. So that's something that we're looking at doing next. So we want to hear from students, you know, about what they do find engaging. You know, for some students, you hear very different things. Like I've heard so many different reports from parents. Some parents who say, my child just finished with the work in, you know, two hours and then they feel they have nothing to do. Others who feel it's overwhelming and there is too much work and it just, it actually feels like more pressure. And others who just say, we really appreciate having a day where we have some flexibility and we can approach the work in, in a way that makes sense for our family. And our family can make use of that time to do other things. So there's a whole host of opinions out there on just having that kind of day. And then I think more specifically by level and perhaps by grade or department, what are the most engaging, high leverage kinds of learning activities that are asynchronous that we can provide? So I can't give you an answer that we have, you know, this specific thing works the best quite yet. But we are looking to survey families and students so that we have more information on what they're thinking and feeling about it. But also from our teachers to say, you know, what seems to be moving the learning forward? And because what we don't want is busy work, right? We don't want students just engaged in work for the sake of doing it. And I think Chris referenced, you know, some off-screen time. So making sure that some of what we're asking students to do doesn't involve a screen because so much of it necessarily has to. So what can we do, like students actually reading a physical book? Or, you know, going outside and doing some research that way? Or there are so many interesting things you could do that are non-digital. So trying to focus more on that, something we're thinking about.
As you alluded to, you know, almost by definition, any change you make will be right what some, some people want and right what other people don't. And, you know, you're, you're moving a battleship and it only takes a long time, but, you know, not, no changes are going to be unanimous. And I, I guess that's just the nature of it. And I guess just in terms of the public understanding that what might be great for your family or your child might be the opposite for somebody else, you're trying to strike a balance.
Absolutely.
I would actually like to say that I would like to see a survey as well, because while I agree with Bill that you're never going to please everybody all the time, I think it's valuable information to hear from our families and students, parents and students to see how, what their feelings are about Wednesdays. And, and where do we net out? How, how many families are liking the flexibility of a Wednesday? And how, and, and how many parents really would like to see their children back in school? Maybe valuable information.
Sure. I guess I would just add to that while we're on the notion of surveys and while everybody's gathering their thoughts, that it was that it was interesting to see the survey responses that you put up. You had, you know, a couple of different surveys and I don't know what the percent rate of return was. And I don't need to know, you know, it's not important right here, but I know we sometimes talk about the, the utility value of survey data and Bill will remind us of, you know, what we need to have it statistically valid and all of that. But nevertheless, I think the questions that you asked and the feedback that you received are interesting to reflect on and do provide some signals for how to move forward. And I, I was thinking, even as I digested the information that you shared tonight, that if there is a way to invite students into a conversation about what has worked really well and what is just not working for you and what feels fair and what feels unfair. I think kids have a really acute sense of fairness. And I think to just try to invite them into a conversation where even there would be an opportunity to suggest, you know, the one thing that you think would make this situation better, that's age-appropriate for your cohort. Not to say, you know, there's something new under the sun, but, you know, I think there's value in, in children feeling included and that their experience is important to hear about and to consider. And you never know when there might actually be one or two things that we could change in terms of the way we're doing business for kids at home or kids in school or kids on Wednesdays that would make a meaningful difference. I don't know off the top of my head what those things are, but I did find it valuable to read the survey information that you shared. I really did, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also, I also think Marjorie and Catherine and Bill, I'm assuming that a data-based approach here would be really worthwhile. And while I absolutely think we should ask students, I think at the younger grade levels, we need to ask their parents too, maybe at the older grade levels too, but certainly at the younger grade levels. I think we ought to be asking the community what they think and ask the teachers what they think about Wednesdays and how they evaluate the trade-off between having students in, in the classroom environment versus a professional learning day. I do, I do think getting some data around this would be very useful.
I do agree, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to monopolize, and I'm done after this, I promise. But I guess the other thought I have about the Wednesdays is that we really don't know for how long we're going to be in this situation. And we really don't know for how long this is going to be the best it gets for a while before it gets worse and then maybe gets better. And so one hope that I would have around the Wednesdays is that by dedicating ourselves to these opportunities, you know, the instruct, the example you provided from yesterday where Math 612 met was, you know, valuable to hear about. And thinking about trying to create opportunities to really improve coherence and vertical articulation and, you know, things that are important to pay attention to also, not at the expense of in-person student time. I mean, I know we all agree that that is actually the most important thing. It's what we all want for every child, every day. But for while we're in this pandemic and trying to come up with the safest, most thoughtful plan that we can constantly reevaluating the risks and opportunities. If we're in this for quite some time, then, you know, it's possible we might look back and say that we feel that we did the right thing by really dedicating the time to the professional learning for this period of time that we are doing that. And I do feel very fortunate, I know we all do, that we have a framework. We have a team. We are positioned to, to make good use of the time on behalf of students, which is obviously, you know, what it's all about. So I just wanted to point out the whole timeline, which is so uncertain. Is anybody else waiting to ask a question or comment? Okay, if not, then again, thank you so much for joining us for the time you put into the presentation and the overview and for all of the work that you're facilitating with our faculty every day. And we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night to those of you who aren't staying for the rest of the meeting. Thanks for being here. And thank you again, Mary. I think that brings us to public forum then, if there are no further comments or questions. So again, I'll invite community members to please share questions or comments with us. Please identify yourself and let us know where you live in the district. And when you're ready, Kim, I'm gonna enlist your assistance in please reading the questions and comments that have come in so far. The board is gonna just really be in listening mode here. As I think many of you probably are aware, we aren't able to engage in a back and forth, but you can count on us to be listening and taking notes. And then after we turn our attention to the consent agenda, we will have an opportunity in board dialogue to have further discussion on what we've learned already this evening and the thoughts and comments that you're about to share with us. So thank you for your patience.
So the comments that I'm going to read first are from, received from the KLSD public forum email. The first is from Doug Gordon. "Should KLSD students, teachers and school visitors in New York State's contact use New York State's contact tracing app?" And a link to the Governor Cuomo's statement recommending its use was provided. The second comment for, from the email is from Brooke Christian on behalf of a coalition of second-grade parents. "Dear Board members, this letter is sent on behalf of 108 second-grade parents across the district. We have come together as a unified group to discuss the following. 2020 is a year unlike any other. The hybrid model, while decent for our older grades, is staggeringly insufficient for second grade. It is clear from our collective experience that this grade is suffering at a much higher rate versus other age groups and needs full-time in-person learning. Their needs are unique. The reasons for this are well-known to both the board and to the public, but they're worth restating. One, sufficient, or sorry, significant developmental stunting. Last spring, our six-to-seven-year-olds didn't receive the necessary in-school behavioral development essential for second grade. Now this year, they've been asked to jump into a learning format that not only requires those skills but demands them in spades. In stark contrast, last year's kindergarten was denied the same developmental learning, but because they are full-time as first graders, they can compensate for that deficiency. Second grade has not. Of all of the children in the district, second grade was the least prepared for the hybrid model. Two, medical community support. Both the National Academics of Science, Engineering and Medicine and the American Academy of Pediatrics have advised on the importance of in-person learning for younger children. An August 2020 article in the New York Times notes that the report from the National Academics of Science, Engineering and Medicine explaining that younger children in particular are ill-served by remote learning. Online learning is ineffective for most elementary school children and special needs children. The panel of scientists and educators concluded it should be a priority for districts to reopen for in-person learning, especially for younger ages. The Times goes on to point out that the National Academics recommendations are largely consistent with those from the American Academy of Pediatrics. As Dr. Nathaniel Beers, co-author of the Academy's guidance, notes, they have acknowledged the disproportionate impact on younger kids of not being in school. Three, KLSD is one of the few districts in Westchester and Fairfield Counties not accommodating for full-time second-grade learning. Comparable districts all brought back second grade full-time. They include Bedford, Solmers, Briar Cliff Manor, Byram Hills, Chapua, Croton Harmon, Hendrick Hudson, Pecanico Hills, Richfield and Wilton, to name a few. Each of these districts had a unique problem to figure out: space, staff, budgets, safety. And yet, all, they all did. KLSD has not. "The hybrid model asks our seven-year-olds to act like 10-year-olds. It is, it is, as nature knows, impossible. Remote learning days show the struggle, defiance, tantrums, tears, phrases like 'I'm so stupid' or 'I hate school', and inability to understand or complete work. An inability to participate on Zoom effectively because they can't sit still or focus, and massive regression of age-appropriate behaviors. It is heart-wrenching to watch. I invite any board member or district administrator to my home on Mondays or Tuesdays to view a day in the life of a KLSD second grader. It will provide a clear understanding of the unwinnable battle that these kids are fighting. Our ask is simply put: work with us to come up with creative solutions for getting second grade in school full-time, safely and under the current health guidelines. We come as a unified voice of 107 families because to date, our singular emails and letters to the district, the board and to special services have been met with the stock answer advising us to talk to the teacher for more support, or we are working on it. Those responses are akin to asking us to sit in the ER waiting room while our child is in a, is in medical danger. We hope the strength of one-third of the grade's parents will get our children the attention they need. We understand how difficult this time and position is for you. Your mission is to provide the best quality education for us, the taxpayers, by also remaining in your budget. And now you must do all that while keeping our schools, staff and children safe from a deadly virus. Your challenges could not be more daunting. But we also know you are a group who is experienced and creative enough to meet this challenge and create a successful experience for this grade of lost students. On behalf of the 108 families I represent, we look forward to working together on solving this dire issue." And there's the list of the families. Now I will read the comments through the Q and A. Hello, this is Liz Bickler from Cross River. "I would like to thank Andrew Selesnik for making an effort to get the second graders in school four days. It is such an important priority. I would also like to thank Rory Burke. I have raised many questions about this particular concern over the last month in these meetings, and I have noticed that Rory has often commented and reflected on how important getting the youngest learners in full-time is. Really appreciate your focus on this. Thank you very much." Next comments are from Panfertorina, KES second-grade parent. "As we all worry about the virus, after seeing our adult community playing pickleball with no masks in a large group, I am concerned that we would close due to Thanksgiving. We need more town accountability. We are also stating that we will follow other districts on this, but then say, 'Please don't compare us to other districts.' Please advise how you intend to deal with the long-term effects of our children falling behind." And there's a couple other comments. "Can New York State BOSI's locations assist us with our special education students using some of their space? Can teachers provide more structure for Wednesday? Why can't public speak during Zoom? While the need for professional development is there, the kids need a real lesson plan during Wednesday. It has become a lost day." Thank you, Rory. And I think that's all the comments. And the next comment is from Meredith Black. "Thank you for providing laptops and iPads for students to use and have at home. Access to this has been critical. Historically, the district has relied on Teachers College training and programming in the area of reading. However, recent studies have reinforced the longstanding suspicions that Teachers College units of study programs are not based on science of reading. So what is the district doing to help our teachers unlearn the disproven and ineffective reading strategies that Teachers College have encouraged, such as the three-queuing system? What is the basis that we use in evaluating which training programs, collaborations, the district engages in? How do we know that they are supported by scientific findings and real research? How can we justify continuing to partner with Teachers College with respect to reading when studies have shown their program is not based on the science of reading? If they don't understand the science of reading, how can we rely on their findings to assess our students' readings? At what juncture do we secure parent input to understand as a collective what parent concerns are with respect to the education of our children? Certainly, teachers' experience and training is critical and their input is necessary, but parent input in understanding our concerns with respect to what we experience in our children's learning experiences have value too." I have several questions. Historically, the district... We read that already? Sorry, I'm just trying to scroll through and capture the comments. I think there's one more. One more, right? Thank you. "What type of professional development is being done for middle school and high school educators on the science of reading so that they can better support older, struggling readers?" And I think... Sorry, just bear with me. And the next comment is from Karen Whalen. "When will the students be able to attend extra help other than Wednesdays after school? Also, when will small groups of kids be working with teachers on Wednesdays? Twice now, my son, my son's social studies teacher had no live class via Zoom as she was in meetings. Also, Wednesdays are awful at home with no instruction. I have four boys and three out of the four struggle and they just have assignments thrown at them, more so than on a normal day. Wednesdays cause too much stress at home for my boys and myself. Arguments, meltdowns, et cetera. They need instruction. So that means in this house, parents need to work more with them than on Wednesdays. Wednesdays are too much. Can work for independent child not when they need help? It's busy work. My boys are on screen all day and all night." Yes, Marjorie. Kids, no? And the next comment is from Amy Wellesley. "The majority of the community agrees Wednesdays are horrible for parents and completely unproductive for students. Can you give us a definitive timeline on when the decision will be made, one way or another, about changing the Wednesdays to bring kids back in for live instruction? I hear we're thinking and we're considering, but I'd like to see a timestamp put on this decision as we head into November." Next comment is from Erica Glick. "As parents are mentioning worries that their children are being left behind with only two days in person or even four days in person, and they don't feel capable teaching their child what they need to learn at home. This has been ongoing on pre-pandemic for our struggling readers for years. Our literacy program is not research-aligned. It was broken before COVID. We need to look at this with a critical lens, especially in today's environment." And I think I got all of the comments. I think I got them all.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Kim. And thank you so much to members of our community for joining us and for sharing your comments and questions. And to those of you who wrote in ahead of time and shared concerns, we really appreciate your advocacy and, and your struggle. So thank you for articulating that and underscoring how important it feels for children to be in school more days a week. I think that brings us to the end of public forum. And as I mentioned, we're just going to briefly turn our attention now to the consent agenda, which is item 9.01. I'm not aware of anything that needs to be voted on separately. So if somebody would like to make a motion, thank you, Julia, for the consent agenda. And would somebody please second? Thank you, Catherine. Are there any questions or comments about consent agenda items this evening? Okay, if not, then thank you for all of the work behind these consent agenda items. And we can vote. And we can vote all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific, 6-0. Thank you. And let's see. I think that brings us right back to board dialogue and discussion. I'm gonna just pause and allow everybody to gather their thoughts. I'm not sure whether board members brought other topics for this evening or board members have additional questions that have formed as a result of what we heard from our community or comments, questions for the administration.
All right, um, so I just was wondering, I know we spent a lot of time at the last few meetings talking about our sports competitions. And I'm just, I feel really happy that we have still, you know, very few cases and the cases that have occurred, people have been home. So we've, I know my, my oldest son is on a competitive team on cross-country and has been to a meet. And I just was wondering, like, all of our teams have now been to a competition? And just any, you know, just kind of a really quick summary on that. I know we've spent a lot of time on it at the last couple of meetings. I don't want to belabor it, but I'm just curious.
I'll do my best with that, Julia. I believe all of our teams have been to competitions at this point, and they've seemed to have gone smoothly. We had an issue with some lights at a home competition this week, and we had to suddenly shift. Fortunately, the team we were playing was very amenable and allowed us to go to their field and actually even take our home fans to their field and play there, which was very kind of them. But otherwise, things have gone forward relatively, you know, knocking on wood, as I say it, relatively smoothly.
And then I guess the only other question I have, I know we've talked a little bit about sort of parent input and surveys. And I know, Andrew, we had, it was like 180 people on your last, was it 180 or 108? I can't remember, on your last superintendent coffee, or 150 was a lot of people. And I think you did a great job of kind of taking all of the questions and comments that came in prior to that and condensing them. Do you think that we'll have more opportunities like that? I know we have the Learning Cafe coming up and things like that. But it seems like people would really appreciate, you know, input and opportunities for that. And I appreciate how busy you've been, and thank you for doing the coffee that you did. But I'm just wondering what might be upcoming that we could share with people.
Sure. Well, there actually won't be a Learning Cafe, but there will be a coffee coming up. So there will definitely be opportunity for more of that back and forth, and we do look forward. The, um, the questions at K L S D email address is always there. People can use it at any time. We do monitor that. But it, it seems to pick up pace around the time of those coffees or other events when we say that, you know, we're actually going to now try to answer back to those questions. But people should always feel free to write in with their questions.
I think, I think the next superintendent's coffee is November 9th. And just on that note around communication, I'll also just speak a little bit to the fluid nature of these board meetings and suggest that we are committed to trying to structure these meetings in an effective manner and in a manner that does allow us to hear from the community. It is an ongoing challenge to stay connected to community members in these times. And we have given thought to each of our iterations of this board meeting throughout the pandemic. You know, what we're doing here tonight certainly was not our first iteration. And I would speculate, Nora, is it going to be our last? So we appreciate the feedback, and we are sorry that people feel frustrated by our inability to just promote community members as panelists for a period of time and whatnot. We do appreciate your patience, and we do appreciate you participating through the mechanism that we have been able to offer up to this point. But we hear you, and certainly this is something the board can consider. And it's just yet another area where we're trying to do the best we can and get better. So thank you for, for sharing your thoughts on that. Because it feels somewhat relevant to the conversation about professional learning insofar as we've been so focused on our staff through that conversation. I did wonder if there might just be an update. And I hope it would be a good news update. I, I'm not really sure, but just looking out over our staffing needs and the complexity of staffing with having students remote and in the classroom and having to double up and knowing that so many other districts are doing the very same, like from a hiring standpoint and from a wellness standpoint. You know, how are we doing? How is everybody holding up? And how is this looking prospectively if we're about to bring additional students back to school for more days a week? You know, I'm not necessarily asking for too deep of a dive here, but it just does cause me to wonder, you know, how that's all going.
I could speak just a little bit, Andrew.
Yeah.
Without being dramatic, the system is definitely fragile. So we've done well. But you know, anytime that something happens around us, we're vulnerable. Whether that means that one of our staff members lives in another community and their child needs to stay home for an amount of time or just the typical things that happen in a school year, some that are joyous, like someone who has a baby, and some that are less, and someone's not well. So we have been doing pretty well. But I do hold my breath sort of every day to just sort of see what else is developing. But we do have, you know, positions filled appropriately, correctly certified people, and students are having, you know, teachers who are prepared for them each day. But there are a couple places that are a little bit harder to fill, maybe some unexpected leaves where we've had to use substitutes in a way we might not typically use them. But we're optimistic, and teachers are very helpful on a daily basis with stepping in. People, you know, Mary had mentioned it, I think, in her earlier presentation, or maybe Andrew did, you know, interventionist step in or the librarian steps in. And so people are helping to make the whole system work.
Thank you.
This was the topic, one of the topics that my meeting today with Putnam, Northern Westchester Superintendent's. I think there's at least one district and one school in our region that's closed for staffing reasons right now. And this is a concern for all that as we, our staff have to fill out the same screener and answer the same questions every morning that our students do. And so as we enter cold and flu season, even if it's not COVID, there'll be times when a number of people have to say yes to a question about symptoms and then try to figure out what those symptoms are. And so when Alice says we're fragile, you know, with too many people, you know, obviously, we want, just as we want our students to stay home if they're not well, we want our staff to stay home if they're not well, so that we don't shut the whole system down. But at the same time, too many of them stay home, that'll shut us down. So that's, that's very much a topic of conversation.
Thank you. There are no other comments. Oh, Bill, are you ready?
One thing, I I certainly don't want to get into any of the research or the rights and the wrongs of this. But I guess in terms of the reading curriculum, my, I guess my question is, what do you suggest as next steps for the people who have concerns in terms of explaining to them what our position is? Is there a forum? Has it been done? Has it been tried? It just seems like, just to close the loop.
Yeah, I know we've had several conversations with many of the parents who commented this evening. And we're always happy to have conversations about what we can do better. You know, I think in the world of literacy, there are very different fields of thought. You know, when you think about the research, right? So some research that says one thing and other research that says another. So without getting into, you know, a lengthy conversation about it, there, you know, I think people who would argue with some of the things that were brought up this evening in terms of the science of reading or the Teachers College units of study in particular, there's a lot of research behind those. It's different research, of course. You know, my personal view is that it's not such an either-or. You know, I do think there's a lot to be learned from the studies that are mentioned in the science of reading, as it's been called lately. And yet, there, there's also a lot to be learned. Doesn't mean that some of the things that occur during the units of study, for example, a reading workshop that's highly differentiated, that's focused on reading strategies, that's, that are explicit, explicitly taught. And then in addition, a word study focus that is part of our elementary literacy that is, you know, very much phonics-based. We've added some things this year in terms of phonological awareness, some new assessments, some new teaching resources to strengthen those things. So, you know, I don't think it's one or the other, in my humble opinion. But I do think, you know, there's a lot of coming together on the research. So I don't know, you know, what's most productive in terms of next steps, but certainly happy to continue to have the conversation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Marjorie, just one quick comment, if I may. Somebody took the time to say thank you to me for maybe expressing something about second grade. But I actually don't feel that that's warranted at all. I think everybody on the board is unanimous. Everybody in the administration is unanimous. I believe most of the teachers would be unanimous insofar as we want to get as many kids back into the school for as much time as possible. I may be just expressing things in a way that's different. I don't know. But certainly, the gratitude for me is not warranted. I think it is warranted for the administration, who've done a phenomenal job and probably preempted much of the dialogue that we had tonight by announcing that, that we will be working towards bringing second grade back in. So I just wanted to make that, that clear, that there's unanimity across the board and the administration. I think that we want our kids all back in school under the safest environment that we can.
And I think, Rory, I just want to reinforce that. We had actually a couple of pretty lengthy conversations in the summertime about, you know, analyzing who could we get back in? How could we get more students? And, and we were aware at the beginning that, you know, K and one was something that we did want to expand upon. And, and I think, you know, I think it, as a board member, I was aware that that was something that the administration was going to continue to look at and, you know, try to find a way down that path. But wanted to, I think, as Andrew said, you know, balance the risk and the rewards and the things, you know, there are compromises. And so we sort of started with K and one, and I'm thrilled that, you know, we now look like we're gonna have the opportunity to bring in two. And, you know, I'm just hopeful for all of us that we're all able to continue to go to school. And, and again, I just appreciate how much everyone has been working hard and also how much the community has been working to try to keep our cases really low. So I'm really grateful to everybody and our community especially that we've been able to be so successful thus far this year.
Thank you. Okay, then, if there aren't any further comments, thank you again to everybody. Thank you to our entire administrative team for the work that's occurred to enable us to accommodate our families who want to change and to bring new students into school on more days. Thank you to our faculty for the remarkable dedication and creativity that you're showing every day in teaching our students. And thank you to our community for your patience, for being with us tonight, for sharing your concerns. And to my fellow board members, thank you for your partnership. And Happy Board Appreciation Week. Thank you to Parent Council and again to our staff and kindergarteners and young children for the delightful opening to the meeting. Thank you for facilitating that, Kim. We really appreciate that. And we're all feeling very fortunate to be part of a great team here. So thank you so much. And with that, I think we can make a motion to adjourn if somebody is ready to. Thank you, Rory, seconded by Liz. Thank you so much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Safe home, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.